Where's Lisa? Good evening. We apologize for being late at 6:15, but I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education on January 27th. Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright?
Here.
Belville?
Here.
Benford?
Here.
Fuqua?
Here.
Marquess?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Reed?
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ah, where's my vision? I don't have my vision here. I would like to remind everyone who is listening this evening about our mission, which I think is important to remember every time we meet. The mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. And it's important to keep that in mind. We've worked on that statement, and that's why we're here. So we'd like to start the meeting tonight with the superintendent's report. Dr. Messinger?
President Albright, members of the board, good evening and welcome. It's always great to have you here for a board meeting. So I have a number of items that I will share with you, and at the end, I'd be glad to answer any questions about these or along the way, and any other items you'd like me to address. First off, on just a quick legislative update, a few of the things that we're monitoring and working with is initially around school funding. You know, we're continuing to work with our professional associations and with the state superintendents on securing the governor's budget, proposed budget, as we make our way in early in the session, and possibly even do more than that if we can. So it's early on, but we're continuing to apply pressure and encouragement to our legislators to see their way through on this. Specific to early childhood education, the House Education Committee yesterday moved forward a bill that would increase the number of Colorado preschool project slots and also full-day or full-time kindergarten. So it made it out of House Ed. And so, you know, we're very supportive of early childhood. One of our interests around that kind of legislation, though, is where is the money going to come from? Because sometimes what happens is they take it out of the K-12 funding system, and so obviously that's an area of interest to us, is if we can have full funding as proposed by the governor and additional funding, that would be the best scenario. So anyway, early on, we're beginning to see some bills come forward that call for resources for K-12 education or pre-K-12 education. Student data privacy is no surprise to you is an issue that already has the attention of the legislature. Andrew Moore, our Chief Information Officer, and other members of our team, as well as working with our state associations on really reviewing bills, trying to see which of these, you know, come to the surface. And we'll keep you informed. I know that's in our platform and an area of high interest to you as well. So again, early in the session, but no surprise, it's before us. A strategic planning update, thank you for the last hour-plus, where Dr. Pilch and I were able to provide you an update on a work around strategic planning, and we'll be back formally doing that later this spring, and we'll be looking at those targeted outcomes and key performance indicators and the strategies to support them. So thanks for good conversation around those this evening. I'll just remind the audience or those who might be viewing that all of our work on the strategic planning process is under the superintendent's tab on our website, and they can find all of the action design teams and the executive summaries there, plus our vision, mission, goals. So stay tuned, we're continuing that work. Real quick, bond update. We're getting ready to post the position of Innovation Director. This will be the individual who will work closely with our innovation investment of funds around each of our school design teams, and will help work with our district team on establishing our innovation and education guidelines for the district. This will affect every project over the next six to eight years as we work on this. So we're very excited about that. It'd be a great opportunity for somebody in our system or outside of our system to make application for that directorship. We'll also be quickly soon be putting out a request for proposal out for a consulting firm that would advise us around the development of some of these innovation guidelines, and also will help facilitate our work on our three new campuses, our replacement schools, also the Erie Campus, on some design features around innovation and 21st century learners and the kinds of standards around that. So we'll keep you informed with that. Don Orr, Assistant Superintendent, Don Orr, Chief Operating Officer, Leslie Stafford, and Deputy Superintendent, Deirdre Pilch and I met this afternoon, and we're walking out a timeline over the next two to three years with this work. So good things are happening, and we're getting ready to launch a number of them. Last week, thank you for investing a full day in consensus negotiations and working with the teachers and building administrators and district administrators to get that process started. So thank you. Committees have been formed. They're starting their work. I will be providing you an update. It'll be a joint communication. We'll work with Dr. Tina Mew, President of the Boulder Valley Education Association, so that it's a communicate that informs you as a board, but also our other employees as well. So again, stay tuned with that. A good start. Student assessment, so I'm plowing through these. Student assessment update, we sent a communication out within the last week to parents and faculty around just sort of reminder that we're heading into a new assessment, an assessment season, and then we'll be following up with a communication again to parents and employees in February with more specific detail with regard to the actual testing schedules for each respective building. There'll be some variability, obviously, between levels and across buildings, but that's where we, because in early March is when we begin the assessments across the district, both looking at the Park Assessment and also the Colorado Measurement of Academic Success or the CMAS Assessment. So again, we'll keep you copied on all of those communications as they go out. Yesterday, Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Pilch and I met with Commissioner Hammond and Deputy Commissioner Keith Owen. They wanted to visit with us about our performance, participation rate in our fall assessment with our seniors in the CMAS. Clearly, our school district was well below the 95th percentile standard, 95th percentage participation standard. They were interested in what our plans were for this spring with regard to providing opportunity for students to take the assessment. So we walked through that, the communication plan, the work that we've been doing, answered questions they have, work that the commissioner's doing right now with the help of his team, and the State Board of Education is working with the U.S. Department of Education because there's concern that's been expressed to Colorado, as well as other states that aren't seeing the level of participation rate, the 95% participation rate. So, you know, we gave them an update, and we'll stay in touch with them, but I wanted you to know that we had that meeting yesterday. At this point, we do not know what impact our low participation rate will have on any accreditation standards. As you know, the State Board of Education is split on this issue around state assessment, and so we'll see how that plays out. So a fair amount of uncertainty regarding the impact this will have on accreditation status for schools or district, but clearly that's something we want to pay attention to as we work through the spring and beyond. And then my final item, and as you would like to visit with about, is next Wednesday, February 4th, we have a morning work session with the Lewisville City Commission. And you as board members, we are at Lewisville Middle School. It's on your calendar, and we've been working with the city manager in Lewisville and our team to develop the agenda for that meeting. We have way more than we could probably do in an hour-plus, but we'll do our best. So what you can anticipate receiving later this week from Sandy is the agenda for the work session and a fairly significant attachment of documents that really address some of the issues that are on the agenda. So there'll be reference documents, some of which you're very familiar with, but it'll all be together. So there are city commission members, and you will receive that, and the general public will receive that. So if you have time, take a look at that, because we won't have time in that hour-plus to go through, I mean, we'll touch on each of the items so folks know what they have, and there could be discussion, but we certainly won't be presenting on all of those. We will give a brief presentation. Glenn Segrew, our planner, will give a brief update on where we are just with enrollment overall and some of their questions around that, and then any other general discussion. So anyway, watch for that agenda with the attachments, and that's next Wednesday, February 4th, at Lewisville Middle School. With that, I will conclude my report, President Albright, and I'd be glad to answer any questions about these items or others that the board would be interested in. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Board members, colleagues. Sam?
So just on the assessment question, Bruce, if a parent makes a decision, even after our best effort to inform them the importance of their student's participation, if they still make a decision to opt their child out, what are we to do? I mean, it seems like it's out of our hands at that point.
Right.
We would be sanctioned nonetheless?
So that's been a conversation that we had yesterday with the commissioner, and certainly, I think, the state is having that conversation with the U.S. Department of Education. How will handle that locally? Is that if a parent communicates with us that they want their child not to participate, and they would call it refuse to have them participate, then we need to have advance notice of that, and it'll be an excused absence. And so we'll follow our enrollment procedures or our absence procedures, and so just like a student would be gone for any other reason. So it'll be an excused absence. So they would miss the test, and it would likely affect our participation rate if a lot of parents and students did that. And so at this point, you know, it would affect our participation rate, which technically is a state. The U.S. Department of Education expects that to be at 95% or higher. So any one school won't affect the state's average, but if large districts or multiple schools had low participation, that's the bind that we're in with our agreement with the U.S. Department of Education, yes. At least for now. That's the guidelines we've been given.
Board members? Tina? No? Shelley? Jenny?
I just want to clarify, so the Innovation Director and the consulting firm are coming out of bond funds and not out of general fund money?
Correct. Out of bond funds, yes. Thanks for asking.
For people who might be watching.
Yeah.
And then I'm curious about legislative stuff. I noticed there was a whole, on the news today, something about choice. There was a demonstration in favor of choice or charter schools or something. And so I'm wondering if you, have any bills around choice or charter schools come to your attention or been introduced that you're aware of?
Not anything that we're tracking closely. I think there's, you know, some early work on that, but nothing that we've weighed in on yet. So we anticipate there will be both, those that address choice options available, and also, as you know, in recent years, our legislature has been pretty favorable towards giving opportunity and resources to charter schools, both state charters as well as local charters. So we anticipate that we'll probably see bills like that again later in the session.
Nothing yet, though. Okay, thanks. Tom?
Just a bit curious about how we're coming at the assessment issue. Let me clarify that a bit. You know, I think what we're hearing from our parents is that they don't view those assessments as valuable, at least for the amount of time that we are, and resources that are being used.
Right.
You know, as a parent, when my kids took spelling tests, I didn't know anybody complained on that because they knew it was part of the instructional process.
Right.
And I think the feeling is, is that we're spending tremendous amount of time and resources, and it's really not a part of the instructional process.
Right.
And is that, are we conveying that message, and what's the response?
Well, I think there's a couple of things, Tom. One is that, as you know, these are all new assessments, new to be administered for the first time to our students, both the Park and the CMAS. And so, you know, the assurances we've been given, time will tell, that they by design align with the state content standards for Colorado and that should give helpful feedback to us as a school district. Now, whether that specific feedback for a child or a student is helpful, time will tell. I mean, if it helps inform us around math programming, then that might be helpful to the system. But, so, you know, we've tried to communicate to parents the nature, what a state accountability test is and what its purpose is. And then when we give local assessments, whether it's a spelling test or other assessments that might be more meaningful to instruction, you know, that's different than that. But right now, we're doing both, and we don't do a lot of district-level assessments that would be more formative, in part because of the burden of the others. And so that's been some of the conversation. You know, we communicated, the House Bill 1202 Task Force finished their work. They presented, they will present tomorrow, actually, to the Joint Committees of Senate and House Eds. So there'll probably be media reports on that. That committee will report. Del Bravo, who's a teacher at Cole Elementary, was one of our teachers who served on that committee. You've probably read some of what the recommendations will be. Some reduction is what the recommendations will be in the state test. So we'll see where that goes. There are like 20-some bills that have been drafted around student assessment that are floating around out there. So, you know, some bills probably will reinforce what the 1202 Task Force is recommending. Some might be more aggressive than that. What we've communicated and will continue and probably lobby on this point is, for now, what we would like to see is get the state assessments down to the federal required level, because right now, we understand that's a federal requirement. The state, Colorado state assessments exceed that. So that was, you know, one of the recommendations of the State Board of Education is get it down to the federal required level. And, you know, we hope there's legislation that will get us there whenever we can make that transition. Then work with, you know, our congressional representatives to work on the Elementary Secondary Education Act to see if we can influence that. But there's, you know, two bodies, two legislative bodies at work here. So I mean, mostly what we've tried to do, Tom, is help folks understand the nature of it, and it's a state law, and the only individuals who can change state law is in our state, in the state, is our elected legislature and hopefully supported by the governor. And we'll work pretty hard on that in this session. But that's where we are right now. We understand it's pretty impactful. And what we've heard, and you have too at the high school level, is that many of our students are also involved in advanced placement exams or IB, International Baccalaureate through in a school that has that coursework and just other important assessments they need to take, and they're kind of on top of each other. We've been working with our school administration, Dr. Mark Schaefer, our Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership at the secondary level, just today has been working again with our middle school and high school administrators, and Sandy Rublinger at the elementary, really trying to deliver these in a way that they're least disruptive on the other important work that goes on in the school. So it's not, it's going to be disruptive. It's going to take time, but we're going to try, we're trying to do it in a way that'll be the least disruptive and the least times students need to be away from their regular studies. But, and we'll give you a report on that once we have those testing schedules complete. But there will be a number of days that are pretty disruptive.
Yeah, I was referring not only to how we communicate to parents, but how we're communicating up to legislatures, State Board of Education, et cetera. I mean, are we sending a message that this is very disruptive? You know, when we visited Lewisville Elementary-
Right.
-they mapped out, you know, eight weeks' worth of testing-
Yes.
-that went from February through into April. That was quite disruptive. I mean, it turned a lot of time and resources. And are legislatures and the State Board of Education seeing it at that level, or we communicating at that level, too?
So we have shared the assessment report that you received in November that, under Leslie Stafford, we prepared for you about the nature of the test and the time. We've given that to our Boulder County legislators and our associations and our lobbyists and state board members in the task force. We provided copies of that. That was a communication that Dr. Pilch and I sent. So I will say yes, and then I think once it sorts down to the bill or bills that we think are most favorable towards getting us where we think we need to be, then we'll come back again and reinforce that. And, you know, there's some data that you've asked to be in that report that we won't really have until we work through the first cycle of assessment, so we'll build on that. But we'll lobby with what we have, and certainly, I know in talking to Tina Mew, the President of the Association, the teachers are doing the same. So, and I'm working back through the Colorado Association School Executives, and I know members of our board are working back through CASB. So yes, we are, I think it'll be helpful in the next few weeks to a month to know which particular bill or bills are, you know, the ones we want to get behind, because obviously of 20-plus, we're not going to get behind all of them. So we will continue to use that data, Tom.
Jenny?
So, Tom, I'd like to address your concerns a little bit, just from the point of view of what we as board members can do. So I'll just comment that I think this is an opportunity as elected officials to make our contact as well with our legislators, and I bet you have, you know, to talk to them about the impact on our district's elected official to elected official. So I'd encourage everybody on the board to make those contacts and to be, to appear, for example, when our legislators have community meetings, that's a good time to show up and talk about it, as well as maybe having coffee with them. And then I'll just comment that CASB has started again to have Legislative Wednesdays, and while our region's Legislative Wednesday is not until April, they're ongoing now, and so you can always attend any of those. And that's an opportunity to go over to the Capitol if you're able. I know it's a time constraint for some people, and do that then. And I will also just comment to the board and maybe to anybody out there who's interested, the Senate Education Committee has scheduled the next two Wednesday afternoons, not tomorrow, but the Wednesday next, two Wednesdays after that, for hearings on the bills that have been introduced around testing. And all the members have been told to stay late, to plan to stay late and clear their calendars because they expect that to go on for a while. So that would be an opportunity to, I mean, if you're able to attend and to testify, and if not, to contact those members of that committee and tell them our story. So I would think that there are also opportunities, not only for our staff, but for us, to weigh in and be effective and impactful.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So as the, our liaison, the board's liaison to basically our legislature, are there things that we're doing, you know, you guys are doing so that we're not crisscrossed?
Well, I haven't done anything yet, except sort of pay attention. But, so by the way, Chalk Beat, if you're reading, everybody out there should read Chalk Beat if they don't already. It'll keep us imposed. But I plan to, as I'm able, and I have, Diane Primavera qualifies everything, every, so I do try to go to her meetings, and I have made some attempts. And Tina, you're the other person, aren't you? Are you the other legislative liaison? Are you doing anything?
I went to Raleigh Heath and Casey Becker's meeting this weekend, but testing didn't come up. Can I ask a question? If we testify, do we testify as a board member or as an individual? And if we testify as a board member, do we need to make sure that we're in sync? How does that work? In general, doesn't it?
So, here's what I've done. I've said I'm on this board and I'm on other groups, but I'm speaking for myself. So that's a way to explain who you are, but not to be speaking for the board unless the board has agreed that it's, that you would be speaking on behalf of the board at that hearing. Yeah. Good question.
Yeah, but we do have our legislative platform now-
Right.
-that if we follow that, we can speak as a board member if we're right on that platform.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
The question is, our platform's not always specific to what the bill is. So it's always nuanced and a judgment. So it's, it gets to be kind of tricky about it. But it'd be good to go and good to speak. It'd be great. I'll go with you. We'll go. It'd be great. Anyone else? Questions for our superintendent?
I have a comment. When we did the CMAS test in the fall with the high school students, I think, if I understand, I think we revised the schedule after we knew that there would be a large number of students who were opting out. We didn't, I mean, we didn't revise the schedule, but we changed, we didn't have to go to all the middle schools and get the computers and take them up to the high school and make those kinds of changes. So, which I thought was really good, that we could revise it and scale it down once we heard what parents were planning to do and what students were planning to do. And it felt so much less disruptive by doing that rather than, you know, getting it set up a week or two in advance or something. So I was really glad to hear your comment that you were working with the administrators in the buildings to be as least disruptive as possible. I think that's really important. What I'm really interested to see is the schedule of what these tests are. And when you referenced the IB and the AP tests, what happens to children and students who are preparing for those tests, which are so important, that I would anticipate that many of them would not, would choose to opt out of the Park Test. But I still don't want them to be hurt. I mean, are we still going to have school? You know, I mean, when we did the CMAS test, we canceled morning classes so that we could take the test, and then, so I'm just wondering what will happen with all of the classes.
So we have developed a schedule, we being the folks at the schools, not me, have developed schedules that embed the assessments as a part of the regular school day. So for the most part, we won't see the release, ACT, we've traditionally released all students except juniors to take that test. So that's a pattern we've had for a long time. But on the new Park and CMAS, the schedules we developed are designed so that, you know, some students will be taking the assessment, other students will be in class. It'll be like a rotating block schedule. So it'll, I mean, if you're taking the test, you're not doing something else, but you'll be in school. So, or you'll be doing another activity at the school. So we won't have the large mass release of students like we did in the fall, where we released 5,700 students so the seniors could take the assessment. The schedule will not be like that. It'll be more embedded that over the course of two weeks, we'll administer these tests. We'll have a published schedule. So teachers are serving as proctors to administer the test, and much of it is online, nearly all of it is online. So we have to rotate through the use of technology and labs and laptops. And so, yeah, it's a lot of preparation. But people are working really hard to get ready for it.
Well, I mean, it's clear that we're giving the test with an effort to follow what the policies and the laws are.
Absolutely.
I'm also just wanting to make sure that the students who are preparing for those tests, their schedules aren't hurt anymore.
They'll be impacted by the assessments.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, they aren't exempt from the assessment unless they choose not to take it. But, yeah, I mean, it's going to take time away from instruction. So, I mean, there's no way we can't do that, because while they're taking the test, they are not in class. So...
But if they're, yeah, but if they're not taking the test, it would be great if they could be in class.
We're doing our best to maximize that, but-
Good. Okay.
Yeah. We'll share the schedule. I mean, it's disruptive. There's no-
It's a mess, I'm sure, and a big challenge.
Yeah.
And a busy time of year.
Busy time of the year, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Bruce? Okay. The next item on our agenda is public hearing and public participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. We ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, and we ask that persons who address the board, one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over to the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium. Starting at green when your two minutes starts, turns yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turns red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. And I will just say, we have people signed up in public participation, and the board is always glad to have people come and speak about issues that are important. And so today, we have six people who signed up to speak, although only four of them will be speaking, because two of them have given their two minutes to others. So our first speaker will be Carol Diebel, who will have four minutes, because she has been given two minutes from Liz Snowden. And that, Carol will be followed by Peggy Kaufman, who has received two minutes from Dita Hutchinson. So each of you have four minutes. So welcome. We're glad that you're here to speak to the board.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Carol Diebel, and I'm a retired Boulder Valley counselor, but still helping at Fairview in college and career counseling and meeting with college representatives. Tonight, I want to address the impact of budget cuts over the last six years, including the reduced number of course offerings, increased class sizes, and the way this is affecting our students. Our district goal to produce curious, lifelong learners has inspired our schools over the years to offer curriculum in every subject area that goes beyond the introductory levels. This kind of effort is supported by national statistics, showing that among the 3 million U.S. high school seniors last year, 668,000 advanced placement exams were taken in STEM disciplines alone, indicating that taking advanced and research-oriented classes has become more of a common path through high school and not the exception. But the momentum of this effort in our district has been weakened by budget cuts that have reduced FTE and resulted in fewer course offerings and more crowded classrooms. On our campus alone, we have less FTE per capita now than we did exactly 20 years ago, and we have 400 additional students. But the implications go further. Boulder Valley is known for quality, and this is shown every time we send a student's transcript to a college or a scholarship program. And each transcript is accompanied by a school profile that describes the school's test scores and grades, advanced or honors programs, and class offerings. If the courses that are offered by the school and/or the courses that the student is able to take are reduced year by year, even subtly, then the changing profile doesn't reflect positively on our schools or our district. Instead of such reductions, we now have the opportunity with budget decisions to replenish funding to classrooms, to bring back the learning and research opportunities that were eroded over the past few years. And so I am requesting that we direct these funds back to the classroom in order to reduce class size at every grade level and bring back perhaps 20 to 25- class size at every grade level and bring back perhaps 20 to 25 course sections to our secondary campuses. Such a decision could benefit each of the students in our district. Thank you for this consideration.
Thank you, Carol. Our next speaker is Peggy Kaufman. Peggy, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. My name is Peggy Kaufman, and I am a parent and a volunteer in the district. I am here tonight to talk about the upcoming decisions for budget allocations and to ask BVSD to put the money back into the classrooms, especially at the high school level, so students can get the classes they need and want, including more sections of electives and the ability to take higher levels of science and math. Our kids are competing for college with students from well-funded public and private schools who can take multiple upper-level science and math classes. Building up all BVSD high schools to make sure we have competitive course offerings in these areas will benefit everyone. We have had the privilege of being in an environment where these courses are offered, and now they are being restricted because of budgetary issues. In the past, the wider variety of course offerings have made our students competitive and selective college environments and made it possible for them to acquire academic scholarships. I am advocating to have money go back to all BVSD classrooms so that all students have these choices and opportunities. I have three children, a daughter in college, a son and a daughter at Fairview. My son is a junior now, and when he was a freshman, he was told he could accelerate in the subjects he loves, math and science. This is not the case anymore. And even as an IB diploma candidate, he cannot take the classes he was planning to take. Many students open enroll specifically at Fairview, but this is true for Monarch, for Boulder, for Centaurus, all the, all the high schools because of the upper-level science and math classes offered. Unfortunately, there are not enough sections of these classes, and students often cannot get them. When elective or core classes are full, students sometimes become office assistants to complete their schedule. And some classes are too big. My son's AP Calc BC class has 45 students in it, and that's one of two sections, the other one's bigger. So please put money back into the, into the classrooms so that all kids have opportunities to accelerate in the subjects they love. Thank you. And I think a group of us might come back in two weeks to talk about the park assessments. So thank you.
Active time for parents. Thank you for coming tonight. There are two other speakers, Avery Tallman, and then followed by Stephanie Garriga Snyder, if I've said your name correctly. So Avery, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Avery Tallman, and I'm an 11th grader at Fairview High School. When I started at Fairview, I thought that I would be able to take multiple electives as well as higher in math, higher math and science classes with fewer than 30 students. However, I have three examples that contradict this expectation. Freshman year, I was signed up to take five classes out of eight periods. I was told that was enough to graduate, which it was, but they couldn't put me in anything else because there were no electives available. Every single section was full. Last year, I tried to sign up for advanced physics, but again, every single section was full. This is a problem for many students like me because many colleges would like you to take biology, chemistry, and physics during your high school career. My last example touches on what Peggy just talked about. I am one of 45 students in Calculus BC class, and I love my teacher and I find the material interesting, but it's incredibly hard for me to focus with 44 other people crammed into a tiny room. There aren't enough textbooks for all of us and not nearly enough time for all of our questions to be answered. I hope you will consider funding more class sections in BVSD because it does make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. It's especially nice to hear from students. Our final speaker for this evening is Stephanie, and I'm not, I got it right. Okay. Thank you. Well, welcome. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Stephanie Garriga Snyder, and I'm the parent of two children. My daughter is a junior at Fairview, and my son is a, an alumni, graduated in 2013 from Fairview. And I also would like to echo that I would like you to, excuse me, to put the money back into the classrooms. It is not just the highest achievers that benefit. Fifteen more sections at Fairview would equate to a diverse selection of electives as well as classes being offered more than once per day, increasing the chances that a child is able to enroll in those classes. In my family's case, the reduced number of class sections resulted in my son having to enroll in on-level, not honors chemistry, online because there was no space, and it would not fit into his schedule. Dropping jazz band was just not an option. In addition to the cost of the class, my son's experience with this online course was significantly inferior to his experience with classes at Fairview. He lost the ability to learn from class discussions, questions took days to be answered, and labs were much more difficult to perform at home. My son is not a science kid, but we knew that the colleges he wanted to attend expected a minimum number of laboratory sciences. Given the option, my son would have preferred to have taken the class at Fairview. In my daughter's case, the junior at Fairview now, choir is an important part of her life. It is her opportunity to participate in an activity that she loves and is committed. If she were unable to take eight classes this semester, she would have had to have chosen between completing the IB diploma and singing in the school choir. Thankfully, the administration at Fairview recognized the importance of balancing core academics with the arts and made a very, very rare exception for her. She is a happier and healthier child because of the opportunity to keep arts in her academic life. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and for coming to speak to the board. It's important for us to hear what's going on with, with parents and students. It's especially wonderful to hear from students, so thank you. We don't interact or respond to comments that have been made in, specifically with people who've come to speak, but board members may speak about it in their public comments, which is the very next part of our agenda, which is board comments. So, board members. Everybody's thinking. Jenny?
Got Shelley.
Shelley? I didn't see you, sorry.
I would like to thank you all for coming. The concern that you're expressing about class size in the high schools, particularly in upper-level classes, is one that I have shared for the past three years. So it's very good to hear people coming forth and saying that it's not just our youngest and our, you know, most challenged kids that need this kind of attention to class size. It's also some of our upper-level kids who need these courses for college. I know when my daughter was in high school, she had to take two off periods a day because she couldn't get into the classes she wanted, and it was a real disappointment that she was just sitting around when she could have been doing more for herself. So I want to thank you all for coming. It's very much appreciated. And come back in a couple of weeks for park. You're welcome to.
Great. Thank you. Board members? Tom? Can't wait to see. Thanks.
So Carol, Peggy, Avery, Stephanie, thank you so much for coming and sharing with us. You know, it's, it's great to hear from educators, parents, and students, so thank you very much. This is an issue that has been my concern for some period of time. We have not funded growth in this district since the beginning of the recession, so five, six years ago, when we had to cut $12 million from the budget overnight. Last year, I think was the first year we actually got funded by the state for growth. And unfortunately, we didn't use it for growth. We used it for other things. I would have, I advocated for growth. But by CDE numbers last year, this time last year, we were approaching 2,500 more students in the district than we had back at the recession. So it gives you an idea of how much class sizes have grown. We've just recently received some data from last year that we're looking at as to what the class sizes are and trying to understand some of these trends. I, I just became aware of some of the issues at Fairview a little before last board meeting. We had, one of the teachers, as you probably know, came and talked to us about what she had seen when she was at the district, she left and she came back, and what the differences were. And I, I did not realize that we did not allow across the board eight classes anymore for students who didn't want to take them at Fairview. My three sons all went through Fairview, and my youngest son is a senior at CU. So it's been, you know, right at or before the recession that my experience as a parent been, but I, I know that if, if he had not been able to get into Calculus BC like he did, you know, I know my reaction. So I can certainly understand your reactions. And, you know, this is one of the things that I feel very strongly about that we need to address this year. It's going to be a difficult funding year because we won't be able to make up, you know, five years' worth of this, six years' worth of this in one year. But I certainly want to try as hard as we can, and it may be that we can do things such as targeted class size reductions for, for those classes that, that, where we see big gains or there's big needs, you know. It would be nice to go back and cross the board, and that would be maybe an ultimate goal. Although I think we need to be very thoughtful and wise about how we do this, you know, as a, as a board. It may not be the best investment to reduce all class sizes by one or two, but it may be good to reduce freshman LA by five or 10, right? Or kindergarten, first grade classes. You know, we're roughly at the 20 or so students per class now across the district for kindergarten and 25 for first grade, and I'd like to see those numbers come down. And that may be one idea of a targeted class size reduction, as well as some things at the high school. So thank you very much for coming and continue and encourage other, other folks to come and talk to us. We have a budget work session coming up, when is it, the 17th, Lori?
I think so.
Yeah, February 17th, is that right, Bruce?
Yes, 17th.
So I would encourage people to come out and listen, provide us input by email and, or call us on the phone. That would be just great. So, thank you.
Thanks. Sam?
I'll second Tom that some targeted class size reduction, I think, is what seems smartest and probably most realistic, given our budget situation. But I appreciate your advocacy very much, and I appreciate your advocacy at the state level as well with our legislatures and the governor to fully fund the negative factor, the gap between where K-12 funding should be under the constitutional mandate of Amendment 23 and where it actually is. So we're 30 million short in our district, and that would certainly go a long way. So thank you. I also want to thank, I don't want to forget to thank Principal Jennifer Rocky, who gave us a great tour of Lewisville Elementary, and we saw how a large neighborhood elementary school functions. It functions quite well, I think, but also learned about some of the challenges they're facing on the, on the assessment side with some of our youngest learners, but a very informative tour. So thanks to Jennifer for hosting us.
Thank you. Okay. Jenny?
Well, thank you again for coming. I, I think that it's a tough issue because reducing class size is, I mean, all of our, that's our single most expense, biggest expense is teachers, and reducing class size by one costs the district $4 million every year. We're slated, just, just for some numbers, if you want more numbers, the governor has asked for $200 million more for public education in Colorado. Our share of that would be about $7 million. And it's not, that, that's mostly one-time money. It's not something that can be recurring, which makes it a little difficult to hire teachers with it if that's the way it's given to us, and it's, and it's not nearly what we need. So, but, but, but it's, it's very good to hear this, and I'm a little concerned about students who can't take even six classes at the high school level. That doesn't seem unreasonable. Or students who don't have textbooks. That seems a little, seems like we ought to be able to address those issues so that all students can take at least six classes, especially freshmen, and we ought to be able to get textbooks for kids in calculus. So I hope that'll be addressed. So I have a few comments, just some information for the board. So Lori and I both attended the Board of Directors Retreat for the Colorado Association of School Boards this weekend, and I, as what I was reflecting on what board members would find useful to know about that, you should know that we set three priorities for the CASB Association, which I believe that our district would probably share. And one of those was assessments, although since the delegates' assembly passed multiple conflicting resolutions on assessments, it's not exactly clear how we're going to proceed, but it's clearly a priority of our members. And I think that's sort of where we are as a state and in the discussion. We're not quite sure what needs to happen, but we know something does. So, fair enough. The other is the negative factor. And then we also added as a priority constitutional reform in this state, because one of the reasons that we're having such trouble getting funding from our legislature that would cover some of the things you're talking about that we should be able to offer to our students is that we have a constitution that conflicts and makes it impossible to, to raise the money we need to fund public education, either locally or at the state level. So that, that was a priority of our delegates, was to, you know, pursue that. Along, in line with that, Carol Hedges from the Colorado, what's she from, Lori?
Fiscal Institute.
Colorado Fiscal Institute presented to us. She's the only person I know who can talk an hour about tax policy and be interesting. And she's.
She could talk about anything and be interesting.
Yes, it's true. We talked about biscuits at dinner, and that was also interesting. So anyway, she, she's taken her show on the road and is, has asked for opportunities to present, so I'm just, so we might as a board want to have her come and talk to us a little bit about tax policy. It would have the advantage, especially if we did it in a public session, of maybe being recorded and people could watch it. But also, Bruce, I'm just going to suggest that maybe our DAC or parent council would like to hear from her, because I think this is a poorly, I mean, it's just a poorly understood topic, and the more we know about it, the better prepared we'll be when the time comes for people to vote. So, or if anybody out there watching wants Carol Hedges to come, she's willing. So I'd also like to mention that, let's see, I already talked about the legislative days. I had an opportunity to visit Eldorado K-8 yesterday. I try to get over there because it's in my director district every once in a while. And I would like to say that there, that's a great school. We're doing great work in this district, even with our funding resources, and I saw some, I saw some evidence that are, that are, even though we haven't rolled out our strategic plan yet, the work we've done on mission, vision, and goals is translating down to the, to the school level. And, and I saw that in the way that this school has adopted choice for students as a, as a goal. And when I was in several classrooms, I mean, in a couple of classrooms, I saw that at work. And one of the, I saw, one of the things that I saw that I'd like to ask about a little bit is the science teacher, the seventh grade science teacher there had created this fabulous curriculum that's online. I walked into her classroom and thought students were taking a test because it was so quiet, but no, they were engrossed in their own individualized work, technology-based work, and everybody had, you know, it was differentiated. And so I asked her, well, are you able to share this out at the district level? And she said, no, not really. I mean, she spent hours developing this, and we don't seem to have a venue for sharing it out. So I hope that we'll address that, because it would be a shame to lose that if she were to leave or not to share what she has done with, with other students in the district. And then I would also sort of like to mention that one of the things that excites me that the principals of our K-8s are doing, that I talked a little bit with Robin, is, one of the things that disappointed me when we opened up Aspen Creek and our other K-8s is we never, as a district, we opened up K-8 schools in East County, in East District, but we never really thought about what that meant programmatically, or we haven't really done a good job of that. And so our K-8 teachers are working with the BOCs, I mean, our K-8 principals are working with the BOCs to, to sort of explore what the strengths of a K-8 model are. And I, I hope that we'll support that work as a district as well, because it seems to me like they're doing some really interesting and exciting things, and it opens up the possibility that if Eldorado, if Erie were to open as a K-8, we'd have, not just, it wouldn't just be a space saver, but it would be programmatically, we'd have a programmatic idea of how to proceed with that. Let's see. I also, yesterday was a really nice day, so I was out and about talking to people, and one of my neighbors mentioned to me that Cole was having a parent input session for the principal. And I would like to say that Sandy Riplinger is a jewel. So I, I, because I happened to stop into the parent input session because they're hiring a new principal there, and you have such a nice rapport with those parents, Sandy. And I thought that the, the session was great, and I, I will say that one of the things that the parents said they wanted from a principal was that decisions be made without, that benefited the whole student body or teacher body without, without bowing to the input of just a vocal few. They wanted everybody's, everybody heard. So I thought, oh, well, that's sort of what we're doing now, is we're not letting a that's sort of what we're doing now, is we're not letting a vocal few dominate decision-making." Um, it was, it was just a concern that there's. So anyway, I, I thought that you, that it was, you did a nice job of capturing input. And I look forward to hiring a really great principal at Cole and at our other schools that, that need, needed. And, I'm sorry to take up so much time. One more thing. Um, I'm going to judge History Day at Brimfield Heights Middle School on Thursday. And, um, while, um, I'm doing that because a friend of mine is recruiting volunteers, and I got snagged into it. I, um, and I don't suggest that you all be there all day. You might. If you're interested in some of the great things that are going on in curriculum and have a chance, stop by on Thursday at Brimfield Heights Middle School, just to see what a great History Day looks like and what, um, what, um, what the projects look like and the kinds of critical thinking skills we're building in our kids with that kind of thing. Thank you. Sorry to take so long.
Oh, good. Well, there's a lot going on. We always know spring's a busy time. Um, anyone else?
Um, I would just like to thank our speakers, people who came to talk to us about what your concerns are. Um, you know, we're here to represent the community and make good, solid decisions. And, um, these are some questions that we have been talking about in the board and that our administration is talking about as well. So, um, it's good to hear your perspective, and, uh, we're working on what the issues are. Sam said it, I think, the fact that we have such, we have been cut in our district by so much money. That makes it very, very difficult to balance everything that we do. Um, I heard some, um, disturbing, um, future guesses about what might happen with the budget for this year. I mean, we have not yet heard what the final decision is, um, from the legislature, but there's always pressure for that money. And an idea, I think, that public schools can do, um, pretty well. Um, we've all pitched in, teachers have pitched in, parents have pitched in. Um, parents have done a lot of fundraising for programs to make sure that we can carry forward what we're, no needs to be taught. Um, and so I think in some people's minds, there's an idea that, "Well, they've proven they can do it, so maybe they don't need all the money." So it's just, um, real important to continue to, to raise those issues at the legislature. Um, and, and to ensure that it goes to public schools. It's our future and our democracy about our kids. So, um, you know, it's, um, I'm, I'm hopeful. Um, and we have to work hard. We've got our work cut out for us this spring. Um, uh, and, and along those lines, um, Bruce, what would, I was just thinking that it might be helpful, um, that when there are bills coming up, when you or other staff members are lobbying or testifying, it might be good for one of us to go. I mean, to let us know. Because I think there's strength in numbers to say, you know, that, yeah, we, this is the whole district that's speaking, not just a staff person talking about privacy or testing or you lobbying about money or whatever it is. But I just think it'd be a good idea for, you know, to let us know in advance, and maybe one of us could go and support, you know, be, be supportive. Um, oh, and I also wanted to mention, um, that our, in our negotiation session, Bruce mentioned it too, in, in his superintendent's report, but the negotiation session that we had last Wednesday was, um, very good, and it was very powerful. And, and I'm constantly reminded about the passion and the commitment of our educators. And I just, as a general statement, I just can't thank you enough, all of you out there, for the work that you do with our kids. Um, and it was a good session with administrators, central administration, building administrators, school board members, all of us were there, members of the leadership team, of BVA, and the negotiating team. And it was a very productive day of making sure that our relationships are strong and that, um, you know, we're addressing what the issues are of our, our teaching staff and faculty. So, um, I really appreciated it, and, um, it was actually fun. So it's good to have a good negotiation session. So, thank you. Um, the next item on our agenda is, um, an information item. It's on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee description. And we have this information in our packet. And Bruce, lead us on.
So in, on your packet 6.1, you have, um, information on the Bond Oversight Committee. So this is, um, um, a committee that had high function and utility in our last bond issue, 2006. And, um, we believe, um, and I think you do, because you included it in the ballot language, that, uh, it is the right thing to do. It is, um, constructive and helpful to us. And so, uh, we are, uh, in this action tonight recommending that we proceed with the creation of a, uh, a new, uh, Bond Oversight Committee, which will, uh, serve its role around the most recently approved bond issue. One of the things I would just mention is that, um, part of, uh, the competence and the support that we enjoyed in this last election, we believe, in part, is due to the good work of the board and the '06 bond and the Bond Oversight Committee and, um, the belief, which is accurate, that what the board at the time said they would do when the voters approved the '06 bond, we did, and carried through with that commitment and, uh, under the guidance of you as the board members and those before you, as well as our staff and the Bond Oversight Committee. So, um, this, uh, item is a brief description of justification, which I guess mostly I just gave, and also how it is that we would, who would, who would comprise the team. Also, uh, how the information would be shared, so a little recruiting. And then the timeline by which, um, it would come back to you and the, as it says at the bottom, "Early Spring, the first meeting." So it's, uh, you know, a long, uh, process that we'll go through with this, and we'll encourage folks to participate. And, um, you can see as an attachment, and those who are online can do the same, there is an, uh, application, um, that would be completed, and the same general description. So those are both available as attachments. So, um, we need to start this process, and it's time. So, um, we, uh, trust that you are supportive of this as we go forward. And so, uh, it's before you, uh, eve, this evening for your consideration, uh, and comment. So I think that's probably adequate introduction to the item, Lori. Um, I would be glad to answer any questions you might have. Assistant Superintendent Don Orr and Susan Cousins have taken lead on pulling this together. So we stand ready to answer any questions or receive your comments. So thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Colleagues, board members?
So how does the, the charter differ, or does it differ from the CIBOC charter in 2006?
How does the charter differ than the CIBOC charter?
Yeah, versus what we had. I mean, the, the base of my question is, is that process seemed to work very well, and everybody was very pleased with that.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if we following the same thing exactly? Have we made changes, uh, that would strengthen it or weaken it, or, or, uh, just like some details?
I'm not aware of any significant changes to the, the expectation of the charter of the, the group. Don, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah. Really, really no difference. We just wanted to be inclusive and have, uh, representation from all the schools in the district.
Okay. So you, you envision it to be very, uh, similar, maybe exact, to it was during 2006?
Similar role. Uh, they bring a little different perspective. Uh, often our, some of our schools augment their project budgets with, uh, money generated locally, uh, through the school community or through grants, for instance. So the charters have access to some other construction money that some of our general fund schools wouldn't. So we thought it would be important to get their perspective.
Okay.
Yeah.
But other than that, the design team model, everything will be designed.
Right.
All right, great. Thank you.
Well, it looks like, I, I like this, and I'm glad we're getting started on it. And I'll just remind people that Jim Reed and I both served on CIBOC in previous times. And so perhaps this is, I mean, it's also a great way to develop leadership in our, um, in our community. Maybe somebody will run for the board from that committee.
You learn a lot in that committee.
Yeah. Anyone else? No? Shelley?
Um, so I, I was looking at this comment about meetings, about when meetings would be held. And I think they were held, like, late in the afternoon after school was out because some of our, the people who would be on the committee would be staff people, so we don't take them away from teaching kids or being in a building. Um, so if somebody were to call and, uh, inquire about that, we would, you would tell them when the meetings might be held. It says a regular meeting schedule would be developed. So, I don't know. How do, how do you figure out when everybody can meet?
We'll work with the membership, just like we do with SIPSY. I mean, there might be times of days or days of the week that work better for the combination of folks. So, uh, we'll work with them to make that most convenient, um, recognizing we probably will recruit busy people. And so, but it, it has worked in the past, and it worked with SIPSY. And so-
Okay.
Not everybody can make every meeting, but, you know, we have ways to keep them in touch if they don't. So, Don, would that be what we'll do?
Yeah, that's our goal. And then we will typically poll the membership on what time works best for everyone. But we found, uh, late afternoon, late afternoon before, concluding before the dinner hour seemed, in the past, has been the best.
Well, and especially if you're meeting in schools. I mean, you don't want to be disruptive of the school where you're meeting, if you're-
Exactly.
If you do that same-
And we typically will bounce around so they can-
Yeah.
-view the progress of, of the work that's being done. Yeah.
Oh, so exciting. Yeah, be fun. Anyone else? Okay, I, I have one comment on the application. So you're expecting to receive these applications in the mail as opposed to by email?
I think either would be acceptable. They could email them.
Well, it might be. Um, it says, "Please return your application," and then there's a mailing address. So it might be good just to slip in a email address there. I mean, I assume most of the work you'll do is by email. So, anyway, uh, looks like a great idea. I, I'm glad to see we're moving ahead. It's very exciting. So, okay, so that is information items. So you'll bring it back. Do you, you don't, do you need board approval for this?
No, we do not.
No.
Uh, so it gives you the dates there, and you'll approve the membership, we trust, with our recommendation on March 10th.
Yep. Okay, good. All right. Okay. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the consent grouping, and I'll read them. 7.1 Personnel Items. 7.2 Approval of Minutes for the January 13th Special Meeting. 7.3 Approval of Minutes for the General 13th 2015 Regular Meeting. 7.4 Approval of Minutes, January 21st Special Meeting. 7.5 Acceptance of Donation, Nettle and Middle High School, School, Middle, Senior High School. 7.6 Approval of a Modified Lease Agreement for Telecommunications Equipment at Fairview High School. 7.7 Policy IF. 7.8 A Grant Curriculum Instruction for, for D. Eighth and Ninth Grade Physical Science Unit Design with CU Boulder, a subaward from the National Science Foundation. Um, 7.9 A Grant, um, to Sanchez Elementary School, 21st Century Learning Center from the Colorado Department of Education. Do I have a motion to approve? Jenny?
Sam, second. Board members, discussion? Questions, comments?
Yeah, I just had, I wanted to- Turn understanding a statement in the 4D grant request. Um, uh, over half of our bilingual and low-income students do not pass a specific required ninth grade science class. Is that correct? That surprises me. Could someone give me a little more detail on what that class is and say something more about what the issue is and how this grant would help?
Yeah, I'll help you do that.
Anybody?
Dr. Cabrera, are you ready? Dr. Cabrera, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services and Equity, uh, is making his way to the podium and will respond to your question. Sam?
President, members of the board. Uh, Sam, and regrettably, the course in question is our physical science course that we, that we have as requirement for ninth grade sciences. And so, indeed, we do have a high failure rate. Actually, we have a high failure rate in general for freshman students in that class because it's a combination of, of physical science and, and some other topics. Uh, this has been going on for some time. We actually have been working on it over the last two years in terms of trying to provide additional support and even some course redesign, um, to, uh, support our students. I would say for our, our second language learners in particular, I think the vocabulary and some of the concepts are really, um, abstract. Uh, we have brought in some consultants sometimes to, to work with some of our departments to kind of try different instructional approaches. Um, I'd say we're still working on it. But, so this grant is trying to help us get to that place, where maybe we can find another way to help support our students.
Well, I appreciate you being proactive about it. Are there best practices in other districts that we've studied, or do we, is this grant based on something that we know worked elsewhere?
Well, I, that's a great question. I mean, I, I think this has been a problem that we've been trying to study for a number of years, including during my tenure of, at Boulder High. And so we're, you know, looking down the, the road quite a ways that way. Uh, you know, unfortunately, this, actually, this course is pretty difficult across all districts. And it may be the placement of the course, but it seems for our most, uh, science departments, it's the right entry-level science course as they move into biology and then to some other science courses that follow.
Hmm. But there's clearly, something's not happening at the middle school level-
Something's not happening as, as best as we would like it, that's for sure.
Yeah. Okay, well, thanks.
Let me, let me make one other comment. Typically speaking, we, so we try to recover with our kids with remediation and subsequent years. And, and that seemed has been helpful. And it, it can be affirmed by certain, our graduation rate, uh, across different student populations. But I'd say, you know, this is the classic challenge about what's the appropriate and right type of first instruction that ought to occur instead of trying to catch it up on the back end.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, let's see. I'm gonna, if, if I could back up a couple of minutes, um, and I would like to ask if anyone would like to pull an item from this agenda. Shelley, what would you like to pull?
I would like to pull 7.6 Approval of a Modified Lease Agreement for Telecommunications Equipment at Fairview High School.
Okay. So, and your intention is to ask for a vote on it after?
Yes.
To, okay. Okay. Is that okay?
To do?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Are there any other comments on this? Um, other items? Tom?
Yes, so I have, um, a question here on the, the Policy IF. We-
Yep.
We discussed that, um, at the last board meeting, and there were a number of changes that the board wanted. And so I didn't see a redlined version. Uh, and, um, I didn't go back and try to compare word for word. So I wonder if you could, um, give us just a quick, quick briefing on how, on what the board commented and what changes were made. I did notice that the, um, you know, public, um, viewing of materials was left in there, which was an issue. Uh, but it seemed like there was something else, and I just couldn't recall what it was.
Bruce?
Yeah. So Dr. Cabrera had worked on this policy. I would ask, uh, Dr. Cabrera to respond.
So what you have before you, Tom, and we did, uh, what had been redlined before had, had the suggestion to delete was the area around public participation. So that was reinstated, as you can read there. And it's just actually a couple sentences, and, and so that works. The other thing that was brought to my attention certainly was, um, some of the numeration. Uh, so we had, I think, two double fives or something like that. So we had to make, correct that thing. And actually, I thought there was one other little piece in terms of just transition from questions in that very last one about it being reviewed by appropriate groups that I thought I had smoothed out. I just reread this again, and, I think maybe it isn't. So it's a little clumsy there, but in terms of intent, uh, I think it carries what you wanted to have. And so, that's, and those were the only other comments that I received in terms of, uh, potential editing.
Is that okay, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah. And actually, I would just address that, too. That was, that was my, um, remembrance. Um, and there's a couple of the small typos in here that I think we can just clear up. There're just, um, a couple little, little things, but not anything that's substantial. Numbers, letters. Okay. Um, anyone else?
Okay. Um, seeing no other discussion on these items, Sandy, will you please call the vote? And that is to, um, we have polled, uh, 7.6, the, the lease agreement. So it would be all of the rest of the items. Albright? Yes. Belleville?
Yes.
Benford?
Fuqua?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Um, okay. The one item polled, uh, the, our next item on the agenda is action items, and it would be the items polled from the consent grouping. So Shelley, you've asked to pull something. What?
Lori, can you get a motion first?
Oh, um, a motion to?
Or whatnot?
Is there a motion to approve this, um, item? We need it.
To approve?
To discuss it. Yeah. Shelley, is there a second?
Sure.
Jenny? Okay. Shelley?
So when I saw that this was on the consent, consent agenda, I, um, emailed Bruce with a few questions this afternoon, and I apologize for those coming late. It's the first chance I had to get into the board agenda, um, or the board package. But I know that many parents, uh, and teachers in school districts across the country and actually the world have had concerns about the potential health hazards associated- actually the world have had concerns about the potential health hazards associated with cell towers and this kind of equipment on top of school buildings and near school property. So I just wanted to raise this discussion with the board and tell you a little bit about what's going on in some other states. Several states have looked at this, and many have established setbacks for these kinds of, this kind of equipment on school property. So, right now, Connecticut has a 750-foot setback, Maine has a 1,500-foot setback, LA Unified has setback requirements that vary. Walnut Creek, California, has voted to eliminate all cell towers near schools. British Columbia has done the same thing. Georgia state legislators have passed a ban on construction of cell towers anywhere near school properties. And as it turns out, I just learned this, that half the world actually has guidelines that are 100 times lower than the United States' guidelines for radiation exposure from cell towers. And last year, even the Supreme Court of India made a decision to remove all cell towers from schools, colleges, hospitals, and playgrounds because of radiation termed hazardous to life. So the issue in the U.S., and I appreciate Don responding about the health concerns and the controversy over them in the United States, the issue here is that the safety guidelines that were established by the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, are considered suspect because the voting members on that commission, many of them have industry ties. So people are suspect about the level of exposure that's been established, and even our own government accounting office in the United States has recommended to the FCC that they reassess those exposure limits. So this is a very, very controversial topic in the United States and around the world. So my question today to Bruce was, how many schools do we have cell towers on? And it sounds like we have three. I just got the email during the meeting, so I haven't had a chance to really process it.
Sorry about that.
So my question was, have we discussed the potential risk of that to our kids, especially in light of our new, well, it's always been a goal, but our new stated goal of, you know, being concerned about the safety and health and well-being of our students that are in, is in our new mission and vision goals. And I think that if we're gonna take that goal seriously, these are exactly the kinds of things that we need to look at. So I have not heard any discussion about this issue since I've been on the board, so when I looked at the date on when this contract had been approved, it was actually one week before I came on the board, so that's why I hadn't heard any discussion. So I didn't know if the board has actually discussed this, or if you want to, but I'd like to recommend that we do discuss it and that we, before we approve this contract. So I would move that we postpone voting on this contract until we've had more discussion about the potential health hazards to our students.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Tina?
When the contract was first passed, one week before you came on the board, was there a discussion with the school community, the parents, about this? Because it seems in Boulder, if I had to take a guess, people would have an opinion on this.
I don't recall us having. I remember when we did Broomfield, we had a discussion, which was earlier, but I don't remember a Fairview discussion, do you, Lori?
I don't, I don't remember it either, and I don't remember much of a discussion, but just because I don't remember it doesn't mean it didn't happen.
Yeah. And I was looking in here, and there's supposed to be an attached document of the drawing of where things are that is not in here, and I don't recall. I know at the time, we looked at where the cell towers were located in relation to the school, and I don't, maybe you can tell us where they are now? They way over by, you know, the track and football field area?
A couple of them are. The one, Fairview is actually on the building.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can provide that information, more detailed information, but.
Do, do most parents and students know that there's a cell tower on the Fairview building?
I would say most do not know that. I mean, would be my sense. I mean, it isn't obvious it's there.
Lori, just a point of order here. I believe I heard a motion by Shelley, which I think we have to address, and the motion was to postpone this. Is that right, Shelley? Was that a motion?
That's right.
So I'd like to section that motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to postpone this approval.
So what you're, so, thank you. So just an agenda clarification. So Shelley's motion to postpone, Tom, second, if you vote as a majority to approve that postponement, then it will be, and if not, it returns for action in a vote this evening. So that's just procedurally, it's an active item, so if you don't vote to postpone, then it'll be back yet next to vote to approve or not. Okay, so, just so you know, if you vote to postpone, it would be probably good for Shelley to clarify postpone indefinitely or a date specific, then at least, and you've given yourself guidance, obviously you could revisit it at a later date. So if you wanted to create a window for review, then you could do that, or postpone it indefinitely, and then someone can make the motion, or, you know, we could bring it back at a later date. So just, that's just a point of clarification for agenda management.
Thank you. Shelley, do you want to restate your motion to postpone it for a date specific, say in two weeks? Does that give us time to investigate or indefinitely, or?
I think I'd like to make a motion that we postpone discussion of this until the agenda setting committee has had time to meet and see when a discussion might fit in to our calendar, and sometime before this has to be renewed, so that it needs to be timely in that way, but I don't, I can't say an exact date, if that's okay.
Okay.
I think it needs to be part of agenda setting to see when it fits in.
Okay.
So Andrew, do you have a date specific what it needs to be renewed by?
It's actually Don.
Don, sorry. Just so we can create a window that does what, Shelley asked for?
Yeah, in, I'll have to go back and look through the terms of the lease, but I believe an indefinite postponement will, will lose the opportunity to enter into a lease agreement with AT&amp;T at Fairview.
I'm not proposing indefinite. I'm just, I'm proposing that we make a decision in time to make this decision so that you could renew it if you, if we were going to, so.
Lori?
Without knowing when that is.
I think under the term here, it says November 1, 2015.
That's what I thought.
Commencing on November 1, 2015, so it sounds like we have a little time to address this.
Yeah, they've led us to believe that they needed a decision soon, otherwise they were looking at other locations, so I just want you to be aware that there's a potential for loss of revenue, even with a, even with a two-week delay.
When the contract is not scheduled to be renewed for 11 months?
We certainly could follow up on that. So, you know, a thought would be to postpone it for two weeks, then we can do some work on this to see if there's a larger window there, and then we certainly could, you know, postpone it to a later date. So that might be just the most conservative way to do it, and still give you the flexibility you need, and then that way we don't unintentionally lose opportunity that we might want to see. So maybe our next business meeting is the.
I can offer a little bit more clarification, too. I mean, we've both been dealing kind of with different people on some of the contract terms, and it's my understanding they intend to terminate the existing contract, and that they had direction to either terminate it or do this renewed agreement by the end of the month. That was my understanding from the last communication. I don't know if you've had different conversations.
I haven't. But if the board's, I would, I would just bring the point up, if the boy, if the board's concern is potential health hazards, I don't think you're gonna get resolution on that in two weeks. I mean, we would have to do quite a bit of research, present you volumes of information, and I don't think we're in a position to do that in two weeks. I, I would think if you want more information, I would say I need a postponement longer than two weeks.
And, so let me just ask then, if you, you could have more than two weeks, but it sounds like we're up against a deadline, that we need to have a decision by the end of January, the end of this month? Is that what I heard you say?
I mean, that's what they've told us. Whether we can negotiate for an extension, I don't know. We haven't spoken to them about that.
Yeah, well, this is January 27th, so we're kind of close up to the end of the month.
So if it's a pleasure of the board, you need to vote on it, you know, and we won't have a meeting before the end of the month, so we'll do our best to negotiate a longer term.
Okay.
But we can't, we can't answer it tonight, I guess is what Don's saying.
Yeah, no, that's right. I understand that.
Yeah.
Tom?
So I think we need a little bit of time here. It's sort of unreasonable in three days to act on this, and I, I think we can, you know, I trust that we can negotiate something to give us a little bit more time to take a look at it. I think maybe also as part of that, I'd like to look at some of the term language in there. It doesn't seem to be consistent with our policy, particularly the automatic renewal portion of that, if nobody does anything, automatically renews for another five years. I don't particularly like that language. It is, I think it goes against the spirit of the policy DFB under three, first bullet under three. So, so if we're gonna do that, I'd just, that's just a comment. Let's, let's kind of look at it in whole so that we're not, you know, coming back again.
Shelley?
I think the contract, Tom, actually says five terms of 60 months each.
Yeah.
So we're looking at 25 years.
Yeah. A lot, a lot of years.
Right. So, I don't know how much time it's gonna take to get an answer. I think we'll probably be unclear even when we do get an answer, just, I mean, because there's no definitive answer, but at least we would have a chance to have a little bit more information from staff research. I would like to try to deal with this in two weeks and get a little, get better information, maybe some comment from the community, I don't know. Check with the public health department, and what do they recommend? I mean, there are, or state health department, I mean, what are our Colorado guidelines? We should be able to figure some of that out without too much research, I would think.
Well, I think, you know, Don's already in your email, I just had to skim it very quickly, but he did a review of what goes on in Colorado, right? I mean, in that email, talking about what school districts are doing this, and I think that there's probably no state body that's gonna say we can't do this.
Right. No one's gonna say you can't.
And I, my intention in bringing this up was not for the staff to do a bunch of research on this issue. In the end, I think we need to educate ourselves, and I would be, you know, happy to put something together, you know, that, from a search that I've done. But in the end, we just have to decide whether we're willing to take a risk with our kids because there is a risk.
Okay.
And whether, you know, the income that we're getting from this is something that is part of our mission, or whether the health of our children is part of our mission.
Tina?
I would, if possible, in that short two-week time, just to try to get to the Fairview PTO or a student advisory committee there, just ideally, and also, also understand if there are any other costs that we incur, is there someone who ever needs to let AT&amp;T onto school property ground to perform maintenance? Because it is such an incredibly small amount of money, you know, we could eat into that revenue fairly quickly, so that would be my only other question.
It's, it's designed so they have access. We don't need to, you know, there's a, there's a, an accessory building, these antenna arrays are on the auxiliary gym, there's a building with equipment in it that they have access to, they have access to the gym. We've made it, approved the design so that students don't have access to either of those areas. I will add, though, in addition to the approval through the school district, they're required to obtain permits through the city of Boulder as well.
So that has already occurred in this case, Don?
What's that?
That has already occurred in this case, then.
Correct.
So if we vote to, to approve Shelley's motion, we will try to bring it back in two weeks, try to have at least an update for where we are. Does that make some sense? Okay. So, any further discussion or conversation about this? Okay, Sandy, please call the roll.
Albright?
Yes.
Belleville?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is study items, agenda setting. What else should we talk about this spring? I mean, we've got a full agenda coming up, a lot of items ahead. Board members, is there anything, are there other items that you would like to discuss, or have the agenda setting committee discuss? No? No? Tom?
Yes, I've brought this up a number of times, and particularly with the current interest with the budget and with parents and teachers and students, it's the whole class size issue. I think that's worth some time and at least a work session to go over it, and I've been looking over some of our data and trying to compile that, and I'll try to share some of that, but I would like to see some discussions around that and where we want to go. Certainly, there, there seems to be the right time now to, to look into it.
Okay. Thanks. Agenda setting, a look at it. Anyone else? Hearing?
So I think it's worth looking for people who, like me, who always know where to look for, I'm sorry, I.
No, go ahead.
That, I think we can access the, the notes from the agenda setting committee meeting on Google Docs, so that, so people are interested in looking ahead and seeing what we've got scheduled ahead, they can look at Google Docs and see to the extent that we, you know, what the rough, it's not, it's not a, it's not an actual agenda, but it's the rough that will probably be on the agenda. And I'll comment that this may not be the, so, so, just so you know, Tom, we sort of requested that we set aside time during the upcoming budget discussion to talk about class size because it seemed like an appropriate place to do that, so I hope that'll, that'll work for you.
I don't think it's enough time. I mean, having to digest a whole budget and then get into a discussion around that, I think is not enough time. That's why I'd ask for a separate meeting.
And I guess the reason we did it that way was because it's, because you can't really talk about it separately without talking about the trade-offs with other parts of the budget, which would have been my concern.
Certainly, there's. Yeah, I think we all look at where we were, where we're going, you know, what are, how that fits into some of our goals, and, and, and my experience with the budget work session is just so much to digest in one period of time with so large amount that, that we couldn't do it justice as part of that work session. That's, that's the basis.
Well, I think we heard in the work session today that Bruce is bringing forward a tentative, not a tentative, but a discussion about the values of the board, which are about looking at the question of class size and the question of salaries and compensation and the question about strategic plan. And I think we've got some ideas about all three of those areas. So it's not in the detail of all classes, but it is the big picture about, I think, what we've heard from some members, a few members of our community. So, and as we've talked, I think about, you know, maybe different levels, high, high school, middle school, and elementary school, that there might be differentiated funding for the different levels.
Yeah, I agree. I think the overall discussion will end up to, with a question of values and priorities and, and how we, you know, rank things.
Yeah.
But I would like to get a little bit deeper background, just in the class size, before we go into that discussion, which will then, you know, be a, be a trade-off.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll talk about it in agenda setting. Good. Okay. Any other thoughts? So when do we meet again?
Next Wednesday morning.
Next Wednes-
Well, next week is the work session I announced earlier, February 10 is your next Christmas meeting.
Right, okay, good. Okay, so we'll see everybody then. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks.